Good evening. Before I call our meeting to order for this evening, our city clerk has an announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor. As of June 15th, 2020, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of September 8th is now open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website in Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing star 671-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID 85836966569, and enter password 514959, and you will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace City Council for September 8th, 2020. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form and present it to the city clerk. Those calling in, you've received your instructions. So at this time, if you would, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation of the gall, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, but I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Mayor Protem Doug Wilson. And we'll move on to reordering of additions or removal of items from the agenda.
We have none.
All right. So consent calendar is next, and the consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? See none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Would you please call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have public comment requests?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right.
We do have a caller on the line. Let me bring that person in. There is no voice on this one, so they're just viewing the meeting.
Okay. So we'll open public comment for items not on the agenda, and there are no speakers requesting to speak at this time, so I will close that. We have no public hearings, so we will move to unfinished business. And we have a City Department Monthly Activity Report for July 2020. Mr. City Manager Harold Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, gee, Harold Duffy, City Manager. As the council is aware, maybe the public isn't, the council usually receives a monthly report, and it's usually activated through the consent calendar. But every now and then we go through and we give the council an opportunity to make comments on whether there is anything that they'd like to see in the monthly reports. The monthly reports, basically, it isn't the development of anything new by the department, it's actually just the department cataloging all the activities and the core services in which they conduct. Excuse me, let me just grab the pointer. The, no, the. Thank you. So in this, in the monthly report, it's actually given by a department. And so first, we have the city clerk, and Ms. Thomas can kind of go over some of the core data in her report. And at the end of each section, the council can always ask or add, ask if we can add something else to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Our records request summary that we submit to the City Council on a monthly basis, which just covers the last six months, gives you information on the, excuse me, the public records requests received, which of those have been completed within 10 days, which is our statutory deadline typically. We can request that 14-day extension, and then we want to provide you with the number of pages that we give to them, and then also to let you know how many letters go out, just letting people know that we don't have records responsive to their requests. And a lot of times, those particular records are ones that they ask for prior to 1978, so they're usually with the county or through fire and the Sheriff's Department.
I just wanted to point this out to the council, that the data that is normally requested, the majority of the data is for property development. And they're either developers getting ready to buy the property, and they're looking for whether things were permitted properly. And so some of the ways that other communities handle this is that they have a new home purchase program or a sale program, where basically before the, before the home or the apartment is sold, it's gone through and ensured that all the proper permits have been already in place. This is exactly what these private developers are doing. They're using the city clerk's office to go through and make sure that all the proper permits are in place. They go to the clerk's office, but really they're after the data in the building department. And so that's just one of the things I wanted to point out to the council.
And city clerk's office has taken off the main customer service line for answering telephones, and this is just our monthly calls that come in. But there also additionally, we include in our office calls as well, because we are providing customer services to each of the departments when they call, request information from the department, going through the records and that type of thing. So again, it's pretty much a six-month overview, and we average between 300 and 400 calls per month.
Okay, great. And there's some other data within the monthly report. The monthly reports also can be found online. In the city manager's activity, sorry, someone have a question? Okay. Moving on to the city manager's office. Under communications, here's this, and this is July's report, so you'll see that the number of communication outlets that we've used, we have about 600 or 700 or so people that are 811 subscribers to our e-blast. That means we put out something that these residents have signed up, and they get a direct, they get a direct email saying that this information is available, here's a link, and they tie in. This was recently completed by the city manager's office by information on the city's budget. Here's some information too on the city's Facebook page, and we continue to grow this, we're at about 2,400 people that are following the page as of July. Now we'll move over to the Planning Division. The Planning Division consists of permits for new businesses, permit alterations to existing uses, zoning code and general plan administration, RDA dissolutionment, planning commission, building permit issuance, and building and plan review and inspection. And this is just the Planning Division's component of planning and development services. And I'm sorry if this is hard to read, but here's a, here's a section of planning and code enforcement. And so the monthly report has a more detailed information in terms of how many, how many number of cases were carried over from the previous month, number of cases opened, the number of cases closed, and the number of cases, number of cases that are currently in the process. And so often, you'll see a carryover from a previous month, then you'll see new cases that are opened. And one of the things that our goal for the Planning Development Code Enforcement Department is really, for the citizens to understand the code enforcement process, in terms of more than 90% of all of the code enforcement cases are reported by citizens. So it's not just code enforcement driving down the neighborhood and trying to find things. That's called proactive code enforcement. But there are enough cases that we, that we're responding to. So if a citizen calls in and complains about a neighbor's lawn or loud music, we are obligated to respond to that, and we can respond to that in a couple ways. One way is we'll send a notice saying that you, we, this has been, we've been told that this is an issue, and that we'll come by within 10 days and make sure it's correct. Or if we, if we happen to go by and we see it in action, then we'll go by and then we'll send, we'll send a note saying you've got 10 days to correct this notice. So often, people are upset, or they're worried about this isn't being resolved right away, but there is the due process involved in this. And so we want to send that information out to the public so they understand, one, how to report an issue and the length of time it takes for those to be resolved.
Councilmember Allen has a question.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Duffy, on page 73, where it talks about the, there's a paragraph there about the Blue Mountain Trailhead and Trail Grant. My only question to you is, does this grant have a deadline or an expiration date? You know, if we don't use it by a certain time, do we risk losing it? Thanks.
Sure. The grants do have an expiration date, but we're not at risk of losing, of losing the grant. And I'll go over that in another report if I can speak. I'm sorry about this. So there is, for the $1.2 million grant, there is, I believe, a June, I think it's a 2022 day, it's in the report, but I think, I'll get to that in the other section, but we are not at risk of losing the grant. We have two grants. One was a competitive grant for $222,000, $212,000, and the other was 1.2 earmarking in last year's budget from Assemblyperson Reyes.
Okay, thanks. I'll wait for the next report.
Councilmember Hussey has a question.
Mr. Duffy, we're going over code right now. You said something about due process. I mean, do we have, I don't know if I remember seeing, do we have any, like, ways for, like, if people are violation, and they have, they keep getting the same ticket over and over again? I mean, what's our process on that? And how long do they have to pay for this ticket? Because, you know, I hear stuff about, they keep taking me for the same thing, and, you know, they, you know, it's never getting resolved or something like that. Do we have a due process? You talked about due process, but what is the due process?
There is, sir. And one of the things that we can, we can certainly do is get better at explaining that process. So when someone says they get a ticket for the same thing again and again, what happens is, when they're issued a ticket, they're issued a notice of correction first. It says, please comply and correct this issue. If you don't correct the issue, then there's a, an administrative citation that would occur. And so they're, they're fined for that. But if they continue to have the issue, and they don't correct the issue, they're going to get fined for the same issue again. And then, and the code is very clear, there's escalation sometimes in terms of the fines. There's a $100, $200, $500 fine. Our goal is for compliance. It's not for trying to get the $100, $200, $500 citation. Our goal is for compliance. And the way to compliance is initially, we send you a letter, a notice of correction. We ask you to comply with that. You have any questions, come down to the city. And then we go, and we even tell you when we're going to come out and inspect. And then after that, we go back to the office, and then we send another note saying, here's your fine for this. So there's plenty of time to correct the violation.
Here's why I'm asking, because I have a young couple that just moved in from another city, and right across their way, there's like a house there, but it's a dirt lot, and they have cars all over the place. And, you know, I didn't think cars were allowed to be parked on dirt, and, you know, I guess they're just, you know, they spent a lot of money on this house, and they came here to, they say it's an upgrade, and, you know, they have an eyesore. I don't know if the code's been out there or what, or if there's a process that they could call you or something, because you're right, mostly 90% of the time, you know, everybody calls, they either call us or they call the, call the code.
Yeah. They can certainly call in, and there should be a case number, if they've already called in, a case number assigned, and they can find out where we are in the process on that. I know that that, when you're talking about, that is a particularly difficult case that we're working on, and, but it's going to take some time, but we are running through the process on that.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem has a question.
This question before the city manager. Of course, it is weed season, and I know that the certificates went out, or the notices went out, the various offenders that needed to get their weed clearing done. I don't know what our process is once the work has either been substantially done or completely done. There was a timeframe left on one of the notices that said, I'll be back to re-inspect. If a person calls and says, hey, I'm ready for you to re-inspect or whatever, you don't have any comfort, we don't have any, at this point, our process doesn't provide for a level of comfort as to whether it's been completed in satisfaction of the code. Or does it?
Well, I think that in this particular case, this is a fire-related issue. I believe that they're, they're the responsible parties for the annual abatement for debris removal. But you're right, it's, we, they basically give you a timeframe, and they tell you they're going to come back at a certain point in time. I've not encountered a case where a resident said that, you know, I did this, and by the time they came, the weeds grew up again. But that's a very good point, that you should be able to say, I'm ready, or take pictures and turn them in. So I will certainly work with our fire department and our code, and our code on that issue, because if you complete it in a timely manner, you want to get it off your back and not be worried about it. So you might want, you might, you should have the ability to say, I've done this, and can you come and inspect so we can close this case? So I'll certainly make a note of that, and we'll work with code on that issue.
I have a question, and then Councilmember Allen has a question. Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem. I thought you were done. My apologies.
Thank you. Just one other, one other issue related to it, and that is, what if they, the inspector finds that it needs, the work needs to be, say, done a little bit more complete? I can't imagine that it'd be best policy for us to have a fine administered rather than a in-person, you know, discussion at the site to determine, you know, what needs to be done. I think most people, like you said, we're not interested in trying to be punitive. What we're interested in is compliance. And if we are interested in compliance, then it would seem to me the best policy that if you, if a person calls and says, I'm done, come out, then how do we arrange for a in-person inspection where any corrective measures need to be made?
Okay. And what I can do is I can talk with the fire department about that. But one of the things that I would suggest with, I will suggest to the fire department, that if they get cases like that, that we have staff here, our code enforcement office officers drive the neighborhoods on a regular basis. So if they get those calls, I'm not sure how frequently they would be, that I'm ready, but we can certainly go out and do that inspection, you know, that visual inspection for the fire department and give them, give them the information. So we'll certainly work with the fire department on that.
Well, here's what I'm going to suggest is, is that possibly, in our procedure, that we've mapped out the idea that we live in the City of Grand Terrace, not in the county of San Bernardino, who are simply a contractor to us. And so if we want somebody to arbitrate what needs to be done, it would seem most appropriate to have a city employee who actually writes the citation to be the person that meets with that property owner.
Okay. We'll certainly work on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a question, and then Councilmember Allen. If a resident calls in a complaint, does city staff go back to the person who complained and let them know the status of the, of the case?
They do not. What, what they can, they can tell them, hopefully, first thing, the resident will see a correction. And if someone calls in, they can just tell them that there is, the case is still open, but they're not going to divulge or share detailed information, nor are they going to tell that resident, the resident, which is the person who's trying to comply, who reported that.
Okay. And so a resident that reports a case will not know if it's been acted on if there's not compliance right away? And it makes, it might seem like code enforcement just isn't responding.
Right. But what happens, what should happen on the majority of the calls, there should be a visual change immediately. If it's a barking dog, the dog will stop barking, or they'll try, they'll try to do something to stop the dog from barking. So usually, on every code case, there is a 10-day window for correction to occur.
Now, okay, so somebody that is reporting something, are they told that? Are they told the process? There's a 10-day window? We will not, we will not get back in touch with you because it will now become a case between that resident and the city in compliance?
Well, Mayor, I would like to think that's exactly what everyone's told, but we don't have the literature that to solidify that, that I can say to you that this went out, and this is, and one of the goals is to make sure that everybody understands the process and how, and how much time it takes for compliance.
Okay. And so you're working on a way to communicate that to your residents?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So at one time, Mr. Duffy, we had in the city a program where we would assist a homeowner to help correct their code violations if they, if they needed it. Say, for example, a fixed-income senior for maybe, or something. And I know that that program kind of went on the back burner, I believe. But are we working, do we still have some way to, that we can offer some sort of guidance, assistance of anything that people who need it to, you know, fix those code violations? I know that we do for some, where we'll attach a lien, but I'm not talking about that, those cases.
So the answer to your question is no, but yes, you have the means to do that. For example, you have a housing successor agency, and it has about $1 million that we've collected over, over time. And we have been trying to get back to the council with a program to talk to the council about the menu of items that you have available for affordable housing, fixing, fixing up housing, offering assistance to seniors in code enforcement cases. We just have not had the time to get back to the council. But it is one of my priorities that I, I gave to the council, that I'd like to really take some time and really work, work on that, because the most frustrating thing for me is when you have money to do a program, and you haven't had the time to actually push that out. But you're absolutely right, that's, that would be a great vehicle for us to do that.
Okay. Thanks very much. I appreciate that information. It's a good program.
Further questions? Okay. Continue, Mr. Duffy. Thank you.
This is, and also, one of the things that the council has done, we did this, you guys did this very early on, maybe four, three, three years ago, was your weekend code enforcement program. And this program was born out of contractors knowing that if they do the work on Friday and they're done by Sunday, they will not get a permit. And so one of the things which the code enforcement officer does is they, they go through in the weekends, and they look for things and to make sure that people are in compliance, there are the proper permits. One of, if you see, one of the bigger things that the code enforcement officer has to do is remove illegal yard sale signs, and, and, and I'll buy any house, or I'll paint this for you for $99. So they're really helping keeping the city clean. But the weekend code enforcement off, program is actually very successful in keeping the city clean and keeping contractors in compliance.
Mr. Duffy, I've noticed that there are a number of these contractors that now post their signs very high on the telephone poles with some very secure methods of putting them in there. And these are the, I'll buy your house, or all the varieties of those things. It makes it really difficult for the code enforcement officers to get them down, because the reach is pretty high. I'm wondering if they have the proper tools to take them down with, and secondly, what happens to those companies that post in that manner? They generally have a phone number associated with it. Is there a follow-up call to them? Is there a citation for doing it?
It is my understanding, there's normally a follow-up call. The times, not in this city, but in the times that I've been in other cities where we've tried to cite people for, for, for their sign being posted, they said, I didn't do that, and there's really nothing you can do about that. I didn't, I didn't do that. And so we didn't see, we didn't see that company put that sign up. So we weren't, we weren't pursuing them. But I will certainly talk with the city attorney, who's giving me an eye, that maybe, maybe we have a possibility of actually doing some enforcement there.
All right. Thank you.
And this is code enforcement in terms of numbers of street sweeping tickets that were issued. And so on average, we issue about 216, 200 in these two months, but it's not uncommon that the number is in this, in this area. Even though we consistently notify the public about street sweeping, we have an alert that they can sign up for, and they get an email for it. We are consistent in the time of sweeping the streets on a regular basis. When that has happened, where we normally sweep in the day, they sweep in the early mornings, we've corrected that, so the drivers understand there's a route that they need to follow. But we consistently get about 200 tickets every month for, for street sweeping violations, parking violations.
And that's the same, residents?
I can't say exactly the same, but I, my understanding, there are quite a few repeat offenders. And now under animal control, these are the type of calls that we get for animal control parking complaints, and this is the month of July, unlicensed dogs, loose dogs, dead animals, bites. And so you see there's quite a few dead animals calls that we go up and we pick up. And these are animal control investigations. And put in the graphs, you can see the, our majority of our calls are from picking up dead animals. And so while a lot of communities have issues with barking dogs, or loose dogs, or unlicensed animals, we don't seem to have that big of an issue. And this is important, too, is to look at the case where you have loose dogs that we turn in. So we pay about $25,000 a year for housing for stray dogs at our animal shelter. And so we have to have that capacity just in, just in case. But, and that's the minimum that we have, but we've never reached the capacity on a monthly basis in terms of loose dogs. And so I think we're doing quite well in that area.
Councilmember Allen has a question.
I do. On that chart right there, where it shows 14 dead animals, is that, is that about the average for a month, or is this unique for July because of the fireworks?
I think it's unique, but I don't know that it's because of the fireworks. That's a big number for me, but let me go back and see if we have any of the other data from the prev, this is, this is the new fiscal year, so the, if we had more data, I'd have it in the past, but this is the first month of the new fiscal year, so it's not included. But I can report back to you guys on that. And this is reports that we get from Civic Live in terms of residents calling in about a public works-related issue, whether it's illegal dumping, water leaks, graffiti, street sign issues, potholes. So this is kind of the chart that kind of shows what the categories are. So in this particular month of July, we see we have 70% of the calls. So in this particular month of July, we see we have 70% of the calls came in for overgrown grass and weeds. And then the other, water leaks was 14, we just turn those in. Either if there's, if it's either contact the, the person that's involved with, or if it's a major issue, we'll contact, um, Riverside Water Company.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes?
There seems to be a lot of overgrown grass this year in the, in the gutters and cascading over sidewalks. Is that the city's issue, or is that a resident's issue?
Well, um, it's in the public right-of-way, it's a city issue. Now, there are cases where, um, you see, uh, a side street, and you'll see a, a long block wall. And Public Works will tell you that that really is the owner's responsibility, the slide, the side. And I would say, but they have no access, they have to come around and go, so we should be doing that on a, on a regu- on a regular basis. So, um, I think that we are, we had some recent reports of that. And so we are going through, uh, using our work crews to, to, to section those things out as quickly as possible.
Okay. And the reason that I'm concerned with some of the things I'm seeing is I'm seeing the, the little seed leans of palm trees, and if those start growing up through our, the cracks in our sidewalks and in our gutters, that's gonna disrupt the street. And I think the grass really does undermine the street as well, especially if there's water involved. Councilmember Allen?
Um, I just wanna make sure I understand, Mayor, what you asked the city manager, and I just wanna make sure I understand you right. So the city is responsible for edging people's yards? Because I think that's what she's referring to, is how grass grows over the curb and down into the street.
That was one of the two scenarios.
No, I, I, my understanding was that if you're walking down the sidewalk and there's the curb and the sidewalk in between that-
Yeah, I got you, you're right there.
You're getting the, you're getting the growth of the curb.
Yeah, but, but some places where there's no sidewalk or anything like-
Well, you know, for example, sir, the resident's front yard, that's their responsibility. On the other side of the sidewalk, it, it usually, there's a, there's a grass space there, that's also the resident's responsibility. I think we're talking about, um, like Barton Road, or Mount Vernon.
Well, there, there are side, there are residential streets where in the gutters, there are, there's a lot of grass that's growing.
Yeah.
And then there are places where it cascades over the curb where there is no sidewalk.
Yeah, the, 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 the grass growing in the gutter, um, would be a city responsibility, but if a neighbor, if a resident takes care of it, that's great, because they're sweeping, that's great. But ultimately, in, it is a city responsibility. And so, so if a call comes in to us, we would, we would schedule that and take care of that.
Okay, now, when our street sweeper is following, or excuse me, when our code enforcement is following the street sweeper, do they make note of those issues and let maintenance know?
I think that they, some, in some cases, they have reported issues. I don't know if they've done so with, with curb, with-
Have they been, have they been asked to do that?
They have not been asked to do that. And so therefore, I think we, we get the message.
Thank you. Well, I figure as long as they're, you know, driving by slowly behind a street sweeper, they could make note of those things, but, thank you.
Uh, this is also, uh, it's a sample of a list of potholes that were reported, um, through Civic Live. And so what we're doing now is, uh, we have so many potholes that we're, we need to, to complete, that it's become more efficient for us to use our contractor, Hardy and Harper, to come through and just knock them all out versus having our guys scheduled to do. They do it every Friday. And so we're, we're gonna be, you'll be seeing that over the next couple of weeks where Hardy and Harper will be going out and, and knocking out all of those items. This is the list, oh, this is, I'm sorry. This is the Public Works, this is the Miss Trash Collection. So we get these, this information from Burt Tech. And so it's a pretty, uh, it's not, not, not that many, uh, customers are being missed. Although one customer being missed is, that customer's, you know, it's a problem for that customer, we understand that. Burt Tech has a pretty good track record of, of going back and, and collecting the trash. Now, we have the Sheriff's Department, uh, data, and I'll ask Lieutenant Lane to kinda jump in here, help me out if the, if there are any questions that I can't answer. Um, there's, these are officer contacts and calls for the month, 1408 for June and 1291 for July. And just to kinda reiterate, that's officers' contacts and calls to dispatch. And so, um, when I first came on board five years ago, we were getting data that indicated that we were getting, you know, 300 calls a week. And I'm thinking, what's happening in town with 300 calls a week? And in reality, it was seven calls per day, 49 calls per week. But anytime an officer takes an action, that's counted as a call for service. And so we distinguish the difference between that, and we can break that out even further. And then we have citations issued for the month of July, there were 38 citations issued.
Any questions?
And these are the, these are the, how the calls break down in terms of emergency priority one, priority two, priority three, priority four, and there's a total combination of calls. I can answer any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay.
Very good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then these are calls, is this another, is this a bar chart for this? Okay, just another way of looking at that. And then we have the San Antonio County Fire Department incidents. And if you note, there, uh, for other incidents, and it's kinda listed in, in your packet, what others are, and that would be, uh, carbon monoxide alarms, uh, fire vegetation, uh, fire improvements, refuse fires. And so what you'll see here is the majority of the calls are, are medical aid calls, which isn't, uh, unique in terms of what's happening now with fire agencies. A significant amount of those calls are usually medical aid calls, uh, and the other calls are structural fires and, and other issues. We have, uh-
Nope, he bailed.
We don't, he left, okay. If there are any questions, I could, I'll try and ask, I can relay those over to Chief Mejia.
Questions? Oh, did very well, thank you.
All right.
All right, so Mayor Protam has a question.
Not, not necessarily a, a deep question, but I know that we brought up the subject of, uh, revamping our mitigation plan, emergency mitigation plan. And, uh, in all of this analysis, uh, it would seem to me we have some fodder to, to be able to work off of. What's the game plan so far as a, a timeframe? You know, especially keeping in the fact that we are, uh, you know, we have so much ash in the air at this point, that it feels like it's midnight.
Yeah. And, and so we, we do have that on the priority list for us to return, and I'm not sure if we gave a particular timeframe on that, on that one. But, um, Director Weiss and, and myself are working on that. I'll make sure that we get, uh, back, we seem to be going from one issue to another, whether it's electrical outages, or fires, or COVID-19. So we'll make sure that we get back to the council. I would say no, no, we'll get back to the council before the end of the year. I, 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 I would say by November, or later than November.
Thank you.
Since you brought up electrical outages, can we have a discussion at some point with our supplier of electricity? I know last time they indicated to us that they didn't seem to think that we had unstable power in the city, but it certainly seems like we have unstable power in the city. And we might not be alone, but I'd like to know from them what they plan for the future, especially with respect to their upgrades.
Okay, I'll have it as incoming.
Further questions on this item? Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, ma'am, Mayor.
All right, so, close public comment, bring it back to council, and is there a motion to receive and file?
There is.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Allen, motion to receive and file, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Protam Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move to new business, item eight, review of existing park improvements and new park developments. And in my packet, it says Deborah Thomas, City Clerk, and on my agenda in front of me, it says, Mr. Duffy, City Manager, so you'll tag team, apparently.
I was hoping that Deborah was gonna do the report. Okay, so, um, as the council's aware, about a year and a-
It's parks, it's fun to talk about.
As council's aware, about a year and a half ago, the, the mayor and council developed the, um, Park Recreations Committee. The committee hasn't met in a while, but we're gonna, we're gonna have our first meeting this, coming this week. And there are quite a few activities that we're gonna have to start discussing. And so I just wanted to give the council an update on some of the items that we're gonna, we're gonna be discussing. So as the council's aware, we have a number of parks within this, uh, city grand terrace. There's a fitness park, there's Richard Rollins Park, there's the Veterans Freedom Park, and there's a dog park. Uh, and there's also an opportunity to create community garden, and then the Blue Mountain Trail Park. So let's start off by talking about our fitness park. And so one of the things the council, uh, directed staff to do last year was to use bond proceeds to develop a canopy to go over, shading to go over the shade structures at the, the playground structures at the, a fitness park. So we are actively working on that. Also, too, we'd like to, um, m- most of our parks, or all of our parks, have, uh, cameras in the park, except for the fitness park. But with the new opportunities that were, were created because of the, um, West Carhartt going through, um, there are light poles there now, and we can actually put a camera up to, to monitor fitness parks. So that's, that's on our list also for park improvement. And then there's also the, uh, as part of the Community Benefits Grant for the, uh, Grand T1 Project, that's the Patrick O'Brien Project. One of the commu- one of the community benefits is that they were going to give us funding to create an outdoor classroom, uh, and there's space at the fitness park. And so we'll be talk, coming back to the council to talk about that, the development of that outdoor classroom. And then also another opportunity is for us to actually redo the planting at the fitness park. There, we're quite, when the park first opened, it was very well landscaped, and there's more of an educational garden where every, uh, plant had, um, the species and, um, uh, the origin of the plant. And so those plants have now either died or disappeared. And so one of the, one of our goals through the Parks, uh, Committee, Commission is going to be to talk about, uh, uh, the funding that we have and the opportunities to be able to, uh, come up with projects to replant at, at the fitness park. Any questions about the fitness park? Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Robles?
We've been talking about that shade canopy for a long, long time. When's it gonna happen?
Yes, um, my, my goal is that it would happen, um, by November. I, I agree with you, it's been entirely too long. And it's frustrating because this is an item that you guys have already committed the funding for, and so the, the project has not happened. So I will, I'm working with our new Public Works Director, um, to help push that through.
I, I have a question, not part of your report, but it is fitness park related. I haven't been over there for a few weeks, but it seemed to me there were some large trees that were removed and some cones that had been placed in there. Were there replanting going on, or were there diseased trees, or do you know?
I believe there was a tree that was removed because it was a dead tree.
Okay.
And, and they were cleaning the park, but, um-
Okay, so that'll be all brought back as far as the replanting plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Richard Rollins Park, one of the things that we're currently doing is we, we are restriping the parking lot. And the, the striping is occurring because the, 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 the parents were, um, concerned about the, the parking stripes being faded, and as a preventative measure, we need to, to repair those, and we're working on that. Also, one of the fundings we received through, uh, an earmark by a similarly person raised was the, um, the ADA swing at the Richard Rollins Park. We are currently working on that. And we expect that to occur within the next 60 days.
Councilmember Allen has a question.
Yeah, um, I'm asking about the buildings on Richard Rollins Park. They, uh, I've noticed for the last couple of years, the paint on the peeling off, and I'd like to know if there's a plan to, in place to repaint those buildings, the snack shack and the, the, where the cell equipment is. I guess that's Verizon's building or something. Hey, do you want them?
Yeah, so, so I, I think that, um, that was not included, um, in this process, but certainly that's why we're here today, to be, to catch anything else that, that needs to be done. So we'll make sure that we add that to our list. Public Works Director will make a note of that, we'll go out, he'll go out and inspect that and see what the condition is of that. But we'll also, as you, if you indicated that if it is a Verizon cell tower, and, or whoever's tower it is, if it's not in the proper condition, we will ensure that they repaint that as, as, as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
We also, we are examining, partnering with the school district on looking at Wi-Fi hot zones. We did do a quick, uh, review with AT&amp;T, and they indicated that to create a city hotspot, it would be $100,000 per square mile. And so, and that's just to get it installed, and then there would be, um, a monthly charge associated with that. So that's, that was just a general conversation that we had. But what we're talking about here is this general hot spots because of, Richard Rollins Park is, is located next to the school. And so we're looking at trying to find a way to have the school, uh, help us, uh, to establish a Wi-Fi hot, hot zone by using their, using their system.
With respect to hotspot, if you, if a city were going to install that, would they necessarily do it the whole geographic footprint of the city, or would they do maiden corridors where people gather and parks and things like that? So it wouldn't necessarily be the three and a half square miles?
Right. Uh, but, and they, you're right, they would normally do it in, in the cor- in the major corridors.
Okay.
Okay, uh, were there any questions about Richard Rollins Park? Okay. Veterans Freedom Park. So one of the things that, um, we do have a design for is the sign for the Veterans Freedom Park. That's our existing, that's actually, that's the old sign. We have a little facade on top of that, that was, it's a, 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 a fiber cardboard that's placed on top of that. Our goal would be to have the, um, the sign made of the same marble that is made out of, of the, of the wall, the fitness wall. I'm sorry, the, the Veterans Freedom Wall. And so we have, we have a design for that, so the, the Parks Department, the Parks Committee will be coming back to the council, uh, with a recommendation on that. Oh, I'm sorry. And it's also, because it's, it's next to the school, too, we have the potential Wi- Wi-Fi hotspot there, too. Also, I'm sorry, what I didn't mention was, um, there's also an opportunity for the city to examine, uh, art in public places at the Richard Rollins, I mean, at the, at the, at the Veterans Freedom Park. There's a big wall along the, the, uh, small baseball field, baseball diamond. Uh, there's a big wall there, and we've got some local artists that are interested in trying to, um, create a mural that represents the city and also, um, is, uh, consistent with the Veterans Freedom Park. So that, that, that person has been going to the Parks Committee and, and, and recommending, uh, that they come to the council with an art in public places program. And we have the dog park, and this will be an easy one. The dog park, um, when we established the dog park, we also established a dog park endowment. And so we have about $14,000 that we received by, by selling the park benches or- And so we have about $14,000 that we received by, by selling the park benches, or just by having the park benches sponsored, I should say. We didn't sell them. So we have that money, and it takes about $2,000 a year to maintain the, the park in terms of mowing. And so one of the things we talked about doing was doing a fundraiser on an annual basis to try to continue to increase the endowment.
In the package, it said negative $3,000.
It, it-
On page 107 in your table?
Right.
Where it talks about funding for the Health and Education Program and the Annual Fundraiser for Endowment, negative 3,000, is that because you, 3,000 exists in the endowment?
I think that's what that is. Miss Fortune has put down $3,000, and she put in the parentheses, yeah. That's a positive.
All right, so, so there's $14,000 in the endowment, and that would take 3,000 from the endowment, but it wouldn't be money that would have to come from somewhere else? Is that what that's about?
I'm not sure what that is, Mayor. I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
All right.
I'll go back and examine that.
But you're coming back to us with these after recommendations from-
Absolutely.
From the Park and Rec, so that'll be changed at that point?
I think the goal here is, is, I think the goal here was to raise $3,000.
Okay.
That's what that is. And, but I can, I can come back and confirm that, because I know there's $14,000 in the endowment.
All right, thank you.
And this is a community garden. One of the things that the Patrick O'Brien Project, when that was approved, one of the conditions is that he developed, or that we developed with him a community, community benefits program. And one of the things that, one of the goals was to shield this complex with vegetation and a community garden, and orchards, and also access to the San Antonio River Trail. And, and so what's happening here is, because the project was approved, we'll be coming back to the council with the Community Benefits Program, but also the Parks Commission needs to start helping, having community meetings to determine how to best implement a community garden program, make those recommendations to the, to the council. One of the things is that there's about, there's ample proceeds to be able to afford to buy these, these garden beds. And how the community garden would work is the club members would have each one of these gardens, and they would garden those activities.
Like the senior center?
Yes, like the senior center. Any questions about this program?
Councilmember Robles?
That 600,000 figure, where does that come from?
The 600,000 figure comes from the Patrick O'Brien detail for the, for the community benefits.
Who's money?
It's, it's the development money, which they're, which they're paying, yes. As part of the community benefits, they're going to pay, they're gonna pay $600,000 total for the community garden, for the outdoor education center, and the, the trees for the orchard, and such. And then we have the Blue Mountain Grant. And I, I believe that I, because Councilman Allen had a question early, and I thought I included that information in the program, where it indicated that the grant was not at risk. But we are working with the state to, at this point in time with the Blue Mountain, with the Blue Mountain Trail Program, we have hired a consultant, the consultant had an initial community meeting, the consultant looked at this particular site that we have, the consultant mapped a trail from this site, and was going to be bringing back the results for us, but then COVID-19 happened. So we are getting ready to start advertising again for our next community meeting, where we report out the findings associated with this, with, with the consultant. So our next step is to host community meetings. And there's some of the amenities that are targeted based on the consultant. Restroom, one of the things that's important is to be able to have educational material. When you have a trail with education items, native plants, native species in the area, you're able to qualify for more state and federal grants, and actually acquisition, more acquisition of the property. And some of the funding sources that we have, we have Prop 68, which Prop 68 is gonna give us $189,000 to improve or enhance existing park facilities. And then we have the RDA bond proceeds that we talked about earlier, and we also have the grants and the Community Benefits Program. And that's listed on packet page 107. A total of about, with all that included, there's a total of, oh, $2.6 million, a little more than that. And here's the, kind of the list. The Fitness Park, Richard Rollins Park, Veterans Freedom Park, Dog Park, Community Gardens, and the Blue Mountain Trail.
Okay, so the negative 3,000 is because we don't have funding assigned to it?
The negative three, the positive 3,000 is that we intend to raise that much money for the program.
Negative means positive.
Yes, from an accountant's standpoint, yes.
All right.
I'm available for any questions the council might have.
All right, further questions? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close that item and bring it back to council for a motion to receive and file.
My motion to receive and file this report.
I second that.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Mayor Protem Wilson, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'd just like to say that my review of these materials means that every one of our staff members are running on all cylinders. And I greatly appreciate all the effort that's being put out for behalf of the Citisnonry of Grand Terrace, and I greatly appreciate all the new ideas and the, the committee members that have brought in fresh blood to our area. You know, it's not often that you can count on this amount of, let's say, addressing such an explosive amount of, of work. It's just really amazing. And we get this in a local condition. While we might complain about state and federal, the local condition really cares about our welfare and our quality of life. And so thank you, City Manager, thank you, all the department heads, and thank you all the way down to the least hand. Thank you very much.
All right, and I'll second that. If you would call the vote, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. To item nine, which is consideration for the use of Community Development Block Grant, COVID-19 virus, Community Development Block Grant, CEV funds and authorization for use of those funds. Do I have a management analyst here with me this evening? Oh, I do, Mr. Nakasaki.
Evening, Mayor Mcnevo, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers of the council, Todd Nakasaki, management analyst. This staff report, before you promote our 2030 revision statement and support goal number four. Do we have the slides?
Yes.
Thank you. A place where residents can enjoy quality of life that fosters pride and engaged community, and support goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships. On March 27th, 2020, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Care Act was signed into law, and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development releases special allocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds to San Bernardino County as a preemptive means through prevention, preparation, and response to the coronavirus. The program requirements are that the activity support and prevent and respond to the spread of the coronavirus or other infectious diseases, and they must benefit low and moderate income residents. The city's allocation for CDBG coronavirus funds is $100,000. On May 12th, 2020, the city council approved the staff's recommended utilize eligible CDBG COVID-19 funding of $100,000 to support food bank partnerships, and additional funding for the San Bernardino County Shared Homeless Outreach and Proactive Enforcement HOPE Program. Staff recently met with the county and learned that the HOPE Program was deemed ineligible for funding due to the lack of alignment with HUD's mission, and emphasis on providing housing for low, moderate income individuals. Based on this discussion, the city, in coordination with county staff, identified the following two programs for funding to replace that HOPE recommendation that would be more closely aligned with HUD's mission. The first program is the Emergency Rent Mortgage and Utility Payment Assistance Program. The program would offer financial assistance for low, moderate income households negatively affected by COVID-19, and the city would partner with a nonprofit organization, or potentially hire a part-time staff to administer that program. The second program is the Assisting Homeless Placement in Safe Housing through partnerships with nonprofit organizations. The program would assist those experiencing homelessness and need to be housed to prevent the spread of COVID-19 by partnering with nonprofit organizations to get the homeless off the streets and into safe housing. The funding recommendation on May 12th, 2020, shows an allocation of $16,000 for the Food Bank Partnership, and $84,000 for the HOPE Program, for a total of $100,000. Next slide. Now, the updated recommendation would keep the $16,000 of funding intact for the Food Bank Partnership Program. And instead of the HOPE Program, we would have $54,000 recommended funding for the Emergency Rental Mortgage and Utility Payment Assistance Program, and $30,000 recommended funding for the Homeless Safe Housing Assistance Program, for a total of $100,000. Staff's recommendation to council is to authorize staff to update the city's CDBG/CEV funding recommendations for emergency rent mortgage and utility payment assistance, and assisting homeless placement in safe housing through partnerships with nonprofit organizations. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Nakasaki. Councilmember Allen? Question?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nakasaki, my question to you is, are the funds for the various programs, can they be shifted on an as-needed basis? If we didn't feel like we needed as much as we have in the, in one, but we needed more in food bank, could we shift funds to the food bank? For example, or in any way like that? Thank you.
I, I would have to get back with the county on that particular question. I know that they do have allotment per program, but there have been times when we've been able to adjust that recommendation at a later date. So I would expect that to be something that could be accommodated, even though this would be a, a special funding for COVID.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council to consider a motion and then have some discussion. Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, let's see, this is a, to authorize, I'll make a motion to, for one and two.
Okay, staff recommendations?
Staff recommendations.
I second his motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Robles for staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion or deliberation from the council? Councilmember Robles?
Well, I voted for the, the May agenda item. I was disappointed because I was reading all the different entities that were doing what we're doing now, and this is just excellent. I'm glad that we maybe made a side trip, but we got back here. This is just absolutely excellent, and I'm excited to see what, how it affects our community.
Councilmember Allen?
So I just want, one of the things that I wanted to mention is, in the actual wording of this, on packet page 132, where it talks about the Emergency Rent Mortgage Utility Payment Assistance, and the first sentence, it says, "The City of Grand Terrace will institute a program to pay rent mortgage payments and utility payments." So if we're actually, I mean, is there gonna be a, is, are we paying it in full? Are we paying portions of it? Are we gonna, you know, is it, if a person applies, we're just gonna pay it off the top, everything? Or is there some sort of a scale where, based on their income or need, that we pay a portion?
So, and Mr. Nakasaki is probably still on the line, but one of the things that we have to do is we have to make sure, and we will, about compliance with HUD's income requirements. And then based upon that, it'll be based on, on the recipient's needs. You know, Councilman Allen and I talked earlier about the wording and also the, understanding the definitions of homelessness. While we talk about, you know, getting people off the streets, there are people that are so classified as homeless that are not actually on the street. They're living in, on someone's couch, and so on, and so on. So our goal would be, is to ensure that if we do it internally or use a nonprofit, that we clearly have an understanding of who's eligible for the funding, and it's not just if you're on the street, but if you meet HUD's income requirements.
Okay, thanks for that. And just one, one last thing that I noticed that I'd like to mention. My experience has shown that one of the, nowadays, the term homeless has been replaced with the expression of people experiencing homelessness. It's not quite as, you know, labeling. What we're trying to do is to avoid labeling people and categorizing them, and, and, you know-
Is it a verb?
I guess you could say it's a more, some people say, oh, it's a more feel-good way of saying it, and that may be the case, but if you, if you're a person experiencing homelessness, then, then those, the terminology, you know, matters. Just like with other situations where the people experience, we don't want to label someone based on what they're going through or experiencing at the moment.
Sure.
I think the goal is to assist people. Any further discussion? All right, Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 10 is Grand Terrace Small Business Storefront Assistance Grant Program to support local small businesses, and a distribution of $35,000 in CARES Act funding to eligible small businesses. Mr. Duffy, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. As you indicated, this item is the Grand Terrace Small Business Storefront Assistance Grant Program to support local small businesses and distribute, and distribution of $35,000 in CARES Act funds to eligible small businesses. As the staff report indicates, on July 13th, 2020, Governor Newsom ordered 29 counties on the state COVID-19 watch list to close gyms, churches, offices, hair salons, indoor malls, and other businesses effectively immediately. And so what has happened to our local businesses and our small businesses is that they still have the obligations of expenses without the ability to earn the income in order to do that. And so one of the things- And so one of the things that we were trying to do when we went through our COVID funding of $153,000, we had initially targeted the enhancement program for Taco Bell, but later determined through consultation with the state is that that would not be the best use of those proceeds because it could face the challenge. And we felt that by using the bond proceeds, going that route would be better for that, but then also being able to repurpose the $35,000 that the council had initially earmarked for the other purpose. So our goal here is to help small businesses owners mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Staff has recommended the council implement a grant program to assist small businesses to maintain storefronts by providing grants to assist with the payment of lease space. And what's important there, we target small businesses with storefronts. And so we're going to commit up to $35,000 and for a maximum up to $3,000. The objective of the program is to offer immediate financial assistance to small businesses located in the city of Grand Terrace to aid and maintain their business space. And so, while qualified small businesses with at least one and no more than 25 full-time nonessential employees are qualified for this particular program, and they may receive, as I said earlier, up to $3,000. The grant funds may only be used, the way the program is set up, only be used to cover lease payments for business premises. Now, if a small business owns their business and they are making a mortgage payment, we would still have that, use that same criteria. The applicant must submit a current copy of their lease agreement, which indicates the monthly lease amount. To qualify for the grant, for the program, the applicant must operate out of a physical commercial storefront within the city limits of the city of Grand Terrace, must have an active city of Grand Terrace business license, be in good standing with the city, there are no code cases involved, and the business will be required to provide a current copy of their W9. If the grant funding is awarded, funds may only be used for the applicant's lease payments. I mentioned that again. The business receiving of funds are required to certify via a written statement how many jobs were retained because they were able to use the, use the program to stay, to stay in business. We will only remit the payment to the landlord, and so it won't be going to the business because our goal is for the landlord and the business to have an understanding to continue the business to open. I'll give you an example. If you're a nail shop and you were, you were shut down for two or three months, but yet you continue to pay your rent, what this would do for you is, by doing this program, you'd be guaranteed for as much as the $3,000 would cover, you're able to open and stay, and stay in business. Or, in the case where you owe the landlord back payment, you can look at that, look at that application. And so with this program, one of the things that the applicant will have to do is to, is to certify that the circumstances, they'll have to lay out the story on the circumstances in which they're applying for the program. Staff will review that, along with the lease and the W9. If they meet that criteria, being they were shut down by COVID-19, they either owe, or they're, or they're going to have an agreement to be able to operate within a certain period of time. Our goal is for the landlord not to get the money and then, you know, have the business shut down. Our goal is to make sure that the business, the storefront stays in operation. And so that's the program, and available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions? All right, seeing none, are there any requests to speak for this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Right. Close public comment and come back to council for motion to consider.
Motion approval.
So Mayor Protem, you were making a motion, staff, staff recommendation?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
And I had a second from Councilmember Hussey. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no takers, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. We have no request for future agenda items. So we will move to council communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't, I didn't attend any assigned meetings, but I would like to give a shout out to some group of volunteers here in Grand Terrace that I haven't seen in a long time. I saw the COPs on patrol today in their patrol car, and I was so pleased to see that. So yay for the COPs, and if, any of you out there listening are interested, they're back on the road, and you can join up. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Mayor Protem. Happy birthday.
Did we do the Accept CARES Act funding? That was a part, okay. Got mixed up with the...
It does look like a whole separate agenda, doesn't it?
Yeah. Because it has its own recommendation and everything.
Scare me like that.
Has its own recommendation, too.
All right. Anything further, Councilmember Allen?
No, that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a League of City Executive Board meeting on Zoom, and the topic was law enforcement, their bills. There's a lot of Senate bills coming down, the AV bills, but one important thing that the league voted on to back up is Proposition 20. And that's California, it's, I guess, on 20, probably California politicians taking away the tools for police to hold criminals accountable for enforcement and law and order and time, it's time to restore the power. So it's basically what it is, and we'll get in the political realm of it. Prop 20 will reverse many of the major flaws in the California criminal justice system and allow law enforcement and courts to charge criminals in certain crimes as felons, increase punishment for convicted felons, including restricting early parole, change certain types of crimes and fraud crimes as wobblers, chargeable as misdemeanors or felonies, and require DNA collection for certain misdemeanors. Especially initiative would allow courts to change criminal charges in cases involving theft and fraud, including firearms theft, vehicle theft, credit card fraud, and misdemeanors or felonies rather than misdemeanors as law currently has. And it goes on that the, also that one initiative would also require parole boards to consider the inmate's entire criminal history when considering release. Right now, they're just considering, instead of the whole inmate's criminal history, if he has a history of violence or anything else, they're going by the last committable crime and the criminals are out there knowing, like, if I steal a car or do a property crime, they're just going to look at that, so there's no, no violent crime in his history. So this, basically Prop 20 is to repair some of the damage from Prop 57, 47, and 109. So that's what we talked about in the League of Cities, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Did you hear both sides of that item?
No, that's what we just heard.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Sylvia Robles? All right. Mayor Protem Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. Obviously, it's a little warm out there. Out there being generally in the air. We have a rural area that we're attached to, and it's a beautiful thing for us. It's called Blue Mountain. But we live in a rural area that encroaches into animal habitat. And if you don't believe that the animals are aware of that, I woke up yesterday, and just before we let the dog out in our fenced yard with chicken wire up to two feet, there was a coyote, fully grown, very healthy, laying against the wall inside our yard. And we watched it when it actually took the incentive to go back through the fence. It leapt very, you know, athletically, right straight through the pickets without touching on both sides, right over that two-feet chicken wire. So they're out there, and if you leave your cats or your dogs out there, I would suggest that you keep a watch on them, along with just the fact that the heat has just been really tough on, on our pets. So anyway, that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, so I attended SBCTA, which is back in session, and OmniTrans. There's a few items on SBCTA that, that I found very interesting. One of them is the San Bernardino County Active Transportation Plan Update. And so we approved the revisions that were in front of us. But this is something that I think that it's important for us to keep tabs on because as they go through this active transportation plan, there might be opportunities for funding for the projects that we have throughout, especially Michigan or the Gage Canal and, and opportunities like that. We also reviewed a Tunnel to Ontario International Airport Memorandum of Understanding with the Airport Authority, which is going to result in maybe some pretty amazing mode of transportation from MetroLink to the airport in an underground fashion instead of rail or, or other methods that would, that would come in contact with either pedestrians or the motoring public. So what we ended up doing is canceling a request for proposals for a preparation of alternative analysis to the Ontario Airport, and we approved this memorandum of understanding, and we approved the allocation of funding with specific sources to be recommended upon contract award. And this is going to be a whole lot cheaper than it would be for a rail project from MetroLink to the airport, which is pretty amazing. The other one is that we received a presentation from Desert Express Enterprises. They, they do business as Express West. They're currently funding a, privately funding a high-speed passenger rail connection from Las Vegas to Hesperia, Apple Valley area, and they've decided that they want to make that connection all the way down to Rancho Cucamonga, and that would travel along the II-15 highway in the, in the middle of the two lanes. So there's going to be this amazing connection between Rancho Cucamonga and Las Vegas. Anybody riding MetroLink from Los Angeles can, can take MetroLink to this stop and go forward. And that is all privately funded. So we're doing some pretty amazing things in San Bernardino County with respect to transportation. We also received the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and OmniTrans consolidation study. There was a, an idea that perhaps the two agencies needed to be consolidated, and the study came back and staff is approving, or is recommending to not consolidate the two agencies. They just, they did not find enough overlap and enough cost savings to make it make sense. And so we approved staff recommendation to not consolidate the two. And we also directed staff to collaborate in the creation of the 11th Element within countywide vision. And this ensures that it builds on the existing successes, the countywide visions for education, housing, jobs, and economy, infrastructure, public safety, water wellness, environment, image, quality of life. And, and so there may be some opportunities there to tap into the county's vision for how we can do certain things in our city. There was also a discussion of the Measure J, which is the county's ballot measure for their charter. That, all of that information is available on the county's website. And so if you're interested in knowing what they're proposing for a change in the charter, which really hasn't been changed since the beginning of time for our county, there's a lot of updating that's going on and a lot of streamlining of the way that it's written. So then in OmniTrans, we looked at the West Valley Connector, which is the, if you're a fan of the SBX that goes through San Bernardino, you're going to love the West Valley Connector because this is an expansion of that SBX line. And so that is, that is moving forward. We also looked at the strategic plan date for OmniTrans and a service change. On Tuesday, September 8th, OmniTrans will begin. Today, they begin, began the implementation of the service and network changes that were approved for the reductions of service. And so that was the last of that, and on to the rest of our agenda. We have City Manager Communications. Mr. Duffy? You save the best for last, right?
I'll make it brief. You'll be, you'll be excited about this. So Mayor and Council, I just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, for the last couple of years, we've had movies in the park. And, you know, obviously with COVID-19, we can't do that. But we have an opportunity to have a drive-in movie on September 25th and 26th. The location is to be determined, but we are, I'll just tell you, there are two options that we're working on right now. One is with Richardson's RV, and the other is at the high school. And so our goal is to have, use both locations, have two nights. We set for the 25th and the 26th. 50 cars by reservation, and so we'll, we'll be able to give you more information before the week is over. But we've got some, some real excitement behind this concept.
And when will the movie be determined?
The movie will be determined by the end of next week.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. We have no closed session. So we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with the council procedures. Thank you all for your input tonight. We are adjourned.